The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Gail Rover, here.
Jennifer Benton, here.
Melissa Johnson, here.
Nathanson, here.
And Tim Abrahamson.
Present.
The Chair requests a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve.
My second.
All approved?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda has been adopted. The Chair will now request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second? All approved?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda has now been approved. The next order of business will be the public hearing, but there will not be a public hearing today, so the Chair will not be opening up the floor. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which will be the new business regarding the North Sound Logistics Center Design Review and the Snohomish County Operations Center Design Review. I will now turn the Chair over to Jen.
Alright, so beginning with North Sound Logistics Center Design Review. The general site information is around the west side of 51st Avenue Northeast at the southwest intersection of 51st and Longhouse Trail Lane Northeast, which is the southernmost drive of the outpost, currently unaddressed. It's in the light industrial zone, 9.71 acres. It is going to be one new building. The building faces 51st Avenue Northeast and it provides pedestrian access to the public sidewalk and a new community transit bus stop for the Gold Line. The proposal provides parking, walkways, landscaping, lighting, and utilities for the new office. Frontage improvements will be provided along 51st and unopened 47th. The design is a mix of wall and roof articulation, paneling, storefront glazing, and canopies, and colors are common to the northwest. So here's the vicinity map where you can see the outpost is located right here. And the RV park is down there to the south. Here's a copy of the site plan. I apologize for the hatching. It looks a little dark here, but those are roadways for the trucks. Truck entrance is up here along the north and then that's not?
The south.
The truck access? Oh, because that's where the bays are. This quality of view is really bad. I apologize. Are you guys able to read that at all?
No.
Yeah, I was worried about that. Okay, so the truck bays are along the south, so that's where the truck access is. And then the typical traffic can circle around along the north. Let's see if there's a better zoom in. Here's a little floor plan, if that's able to give you a little bit of an idea of the articulation of the building. We did just have a little brief conversation with the Chair and Vice Chair about the articulation on the north side. We're likely going to have to condition or ask for something different considering there's, it's one large wall. There's no modulation that provides any setbacks. Here are the color elevations. So this is what we're essentially talking about. The only real modulation we're seeing from the back end here is just a vertical along the roof. But as far as the front elevations, they're looking fantastic. Oops, sorry. You've got some glazing along the main office points, which are at the southwest and the southeast corners. You've got another little office building right here in the middle. And so you can see those articulated architectural elements. You've got a canopy for the entranceway and lots of windows there. Here is the color scheme, lots of grays. You've got this wood paneling, excuse me, rib paneling, blue glazing along the windows. And you can see how they are rotated. The panels are rotated from vertical and horizontal to provide some differentiation. Here is a copy of the landscape plan. I broke it up into east and west, so it's a little bit more legible. But you can see how the type A landscaping provides opaque screening from 51st. So that will protect headlight glare from oncoming traffic. We've got landscaping all throughout the parking area. Along the southern border is a type B landscape screen. The same with along the north. Here is the west side along 47th. New street trees, 30 feet on center. Again, a type A opaque landscape screening along the parking lot. You've got some street trees in there to provide the 20% parking lot shading. And again, additional, you can see how the whole perimeter is lined with landscaping. Here's a little close-up of the trash enclosure details, just to give you a little bit more of ideas of how that's going to be screened. You have a beam up on top and you've got your metal gate that's steel and it's going to be painted along with some concrete. Do you remember those? Were those concrete? I apologize. Alex, I can't see the detail unfortunately on the PowerPoint, so that provided a little issue. Here's some screening demonstrations as far as how the equipment is going to be screened from the public use. It will be screened by ramping. It won't be visible from the parking lot or from the street view. And a demonstration of the lighting. I did not receive specific lighting details with the application. There were some lighting codes called out, but pulling it up on Google, I wasn't able to get the actual fixtures. But this at least gives you a good demonstration of how the lighting is proposed along the building, along the perimeter for security, and along the parking area. And then this is a nice little demonstration of brightness for security. And that is the end of North Sound. I'm going to stay up here to toggle through for any questions that you guys may have on that.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, the question I had, again, looking at the north face, that's actually going to be facing the outpost.
Yep.
That's pretty much just going to be a flat wall.
That's what we were noticing, yes. So Gail and Melissa and I were just discussing that before.
I mean, just because that's apartments and that's where people are living, you know, it just...
Yeah, will need to be broken up in some way, shape, or form.
Okay.
Yeah, as far as dividing some architectural elements, so.
I think the only question that I have is the, besides that originally, but the lighting.
Yeah.
So when we go back to the lighting, if somebody is crossing over from parking to go to the building, I could not disseminate where those, where the lighting posts were. I'm sorry.
Do you see the little blue?
I see the little blue hash marks.
Yeah, I can believe those are the lighting details.
Okay.
So those are showing where the posts are. And then you can see how it provides a little illumination. So it's less in the parking area than it is around the building and along the perimeter on the south side. It's not as heavy along the north. I assume that is to prevent so much glare from going into the outpost.
Right.
And then that will additionally be show of the landscaping, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
The only question I had was I noticed that they are going to have a chain link fence, but I did not see any mention that it will be the black vinyl chain link fence that is required.
To my knowledge, the chain link fence was removed from the proposal. Is that correct, Alex? Yeah, I believe that was in the first set of their application. And then once they were able to provide the landscape screening, the opaque landscape screening, it was able to be eliminated.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If you could go back to the lighting?
Yes ma'am.
One thing that is of concern to me is, I believe in the upper right-hand corner is the truck entrance. Am I correct?
The truck entrance, I misspoke initially. The truck entrance is actually going to be along the south.
Okay. So that, but that is a driveway at the top?
Yeah, that's more for employees to come in.
Okay. One thing I'm noticing about both vehicle entrances is in the lighting diagram, they're not very well lit where the sidewalk is, the public sidewalk.
Got it. I do, let's see, let's see if we can go back to the site plan here, because I don't see, this looks like, oops, it's mainly sight lighting and not necessarily frontage lighting. Yeah, it's like there's, this looks like a street light right here, another one right here at the midpoint of the site. Are you able to see my cursor moving?
I am, yes, I'm able to see your cursor moving.
Those are pretty faint. So, let's see, and there's another one right about here somewhere, and I believe, is that a hydrant or a light? I should have printed out a larger set of plans, I apologize. So the lighting is essentially, should be adequate along the frontage based off of what I'm seeing here. That's definitely one, two, three. And Alex, are you able to confirm a number of street lights along 51st? Yeah, that's, okay, that's what I was counting. So we do see three. I guess you were able to see them all. Yeah, so sort of a little bit north of the truck access, right at the midpoint, and then another one right about here, a little bit south of that northerly access point. So that should provide some adequate lighting. And then I do believe there's one around the intersect, oh no. There may be one from the outpost that we may have to match right there.
I'm also seeing proposed lot lights near the entrances as well in this diagram, once I zoomed in more closely, so thank you.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners?
And the lighting is matched to the west side along 47th as well. You can see the three lights there.
So I just have a question. So we're supposed to be voting on this tonight. It's going to be very challenging because obviously there's some adjustments to the design that still need to be done, or am I misunderstanding? We do have some questions.
The applicants are here. If you would like to ask them any specific questions pertaining to that elevation, the north elevation specifically that we were discussing earlier, would that be helpful?
Well, if they, you know, we've been talking about the lighting, we've been talking about the design, and the concern is, are you going to go back and, I guess, do a redesign on like the frontage? I guess before we can as a commission approve, there just seems to be outstanding questions. So to Vice Chair Rover's question, to also Tim's and Jennifer's, I just don't know if we, I mean, I can ask for the vote, but it's...
No, that's okay. I'm wondering if the lighting would be something that we would be okay conditioning, just because the lighting is as simple enough, things that could be addressed with building permit.
Agreed.
The north elevation of the building, I think, is going to be something a little bit trickier. And I definitely think we should talk to the applicant about what they think they would be able to do to bring in some additional modulation back there, so that it doesn't look like a large straight wall, or if that would pose redesign issues.
As far as the lighting goes, I was able to look more closely at the specs, and I can see that there are also proposed lot lights in all of the vehicle entrances, so that concern is, I no longer have that concern, yeah.
Okay, fantastic. And again, we didn't have a copy of the fixtures with the application, but I think that would be something that's okay to be conditioned as well.
Yeah, I think you're right. If we can just put a couple of those as conditions, we can go ahead and place a vote then.
Yeah, sounds great. Do you want to speak with the applicants regarding the north end of the building?
I'd be real curious to know what they would have in mind before I could vote on it and feel confident, to be honest with you.
Absolutely. Is there a possibility for glazing on that elevation at all, along the north end?
It's a rated wall, so that's why it is stark, because of its proximity to the property line. So there's still glazing, but we can do some faux features.
See, I think they've got the right idea. I like what they're saying. I personally would like to see it on paper before I could comfortably say, yeah, I like the design and it does meet our code.
I think we're trying to keep it a little bit blank, given the large landscape effort that we have with the outpost. We're not drawing a lot of attention to it.
Right.
Trying to have the trees not really have any imposing things, or have a lot of dizziness happening there, so residents are, having with their residents, it's kind of a, it's kind of the end.
Right, and I understand that, but I think you guys have some really good ideas. So if you could put them to paper, I personally would really like to see what you can come up with and then work to code, and I think it'd be a very nice building all the way around, all sides.
I'm wondering if, per your interpretation of the matrix, would windows be something that were required along the north end, or would the modulation be sufficient enough to meet the code?
I think for me, modulation would be sufficient. But like I said...
Yeah, I think windows would just be impractical, especially if that's the type of wall you're saying it is. It would be very impractical. I think modulating would be a more practical use. But also breaking up the landscape enough that it doesn't just look like a flat wall.
Right.
Perfect. I just wanted to verify for the applicants.
I was going to mention that if you look on the opposite side of the outpost, there's all Amazon buildings. If you're saying modulation for just a little bit of something, I believe Amazon added, it's kind of like topography map-like ideas on the side of their walls that outpost looks at. And so it's a little bit different color of grays. Also, nobody has defaced them yet because they're really cool looking. So I'm assuming that that would be another route to look if you wanted to incorporate something from our region. But that, it's a better look instead of just flat, because that was one thing that stood out to me when I read it a few days ago, was like, that is one long wall with nothing. And I know there's trees that are on the property line, but still you're going to see it during the winter time when there's no foliage. But I, you know, can look to see if there's some design things that's not heavy or not too distracting, but at least it gives us a little bit of depth, so that way it looks cool.
Agreed. Okay, so I think that's all the questions, correct? Okay.
Do you guys have any questions before they do their thing?
Okay. So the Chair requests a motion to approve the North Sound Logistics Center Design Review with a condition of modulation which should be sufficient. At this time, the Chair requests a motion, based on those conditions?
Before we see the modulation?
Well, it's a condition that they will provide that.
But do, okay. I'm not comfortable with it, so I would...
And that's, I'm taking the vote, so at this time, the Chair requests a motion to approve the North Sound Logistics Center Design Review based on a condition for the modulation.
I motion to approve the conditions with the modulations.
My second.
All approved?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
North Sound Logistics Center Design Review has been approved. Second item will be the Snohomish County Operations Center Design Review. Jen?
Okay, so the Snohomish County Operations Center is at the southwest corner of the intersection of 67th and 197th. It's where the existing Snohomish County Road Maintenance Operations Center building is, at 19767th Avenue Northeast. It is in the general industrial zone, 17 and a half acres. They are proposing one new building, zero residential units. The new building faces 67th, and it provides pedestrian access to the existing public sidewalk. The proposal provides parking walkways, landscaping, lighting, and utilities for the new office. Frontage improvements will be provided along 67th where the improvements are required. The proposal is a mix of wall and roof articulation with masonry veneer, metal vertical siding, finelowich panels, concrete, and blue lamp beams, and colors again are common to the northwest. Here's your vicinity map for where we are there. And here's a blown-up version of the site plan. They are focusing along the eastern side, along 67th, so they will not be constructing throughout the whole perimeter of the site. And I gave you a little diagram here, so it's just within this area for any paring grading and improvements. Here is the floor plan for the lower elevation. So you can see that we've got some office space areas, and it looks, you can see some recessing along the walls. And here is the upper floor plan. Gosh, that really is small through here, huh? This gives you a little better idea. So here's the color elevation. You can see like three elevation to the north. You can see the different masonry veneer, the metal and fiberglass windows, the beams, and the custom signage, along with the material legend. So concrete, the vertical siding that's metal, the panels, and the seam metals here. Here is the elevation for the south, and I believe that's the east. There was me, I can't see underneath here. Oops, I went back too far. Here's a little bird's eye view to give you a little bit better understanding of how the site will be put together. Here's what you were looking at earlier ago. Here is the landscaping plan. So I just wanted to give you a little match line, separated this out between north and south, and then this isn't all of the north, but it just gives you a little visual of the landscaping proposed. So it's essentially going to stay grass along the frontage of 67th. They will have the black vinyl chain link fence, so that is proposed. And then we've got the type C landscape screening through the parking lot, and you've got your shade trees. And then here's the southern portion, again, with a little view. So the perimeter landscape screening at least goes to, along the south goes probably about halfway through the site, not all the way, again, because they're not revamping the whole site at this time. Let's see. Here is their lighting plan. It's not as colorful as the last one, so I tried to give you a little colors here. Right here in the center, you can see is where their actual building is. So I highlighted this sight lighting type with the purple. That indicates that that's where the lights are along the building here. The green is the sight lighting scattered throughout, and that's matching up with the sight lighting detail down here. And then this pink one is for along the ramp, so you can see right there in the center.
Can I just make a note here? So this is really great to see, because typically we are always trying to figure out where is the lighting? And by you actually color coding this, this is so helpful. So I just want to call that out and say thank you so much.
Like I said, I've been on the private side for a very long time, so I like to try and at least present what's coming through, so that it's easy to find and identify with. Here's some of that vinyl chain link details. You can see here's the double swing gate, and it's pretty simple. Trash enclosure details, so we've got the galvanized metal panel gate here. We have some masonry walls, and its location is right here, sort of tucked back way west from 67th. It's behind, there's a gate right here, so it's not visible. It's not visible in front of the building, and it's tucked on the side of the additional parking areas there, so it's plenty screened from the street and for pedestrians going into the office space. That is the end of, ah, sorry, I went too far. Ready for your questions?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say it's nice to see that this area is getting developed a little bit better and looking nice. As somebody who drives to the transfer station quite a bit, I see that spot and I'm thinking, couldn't we do something nicer? And it's nice to see that we'll have this nice operations center. I'm assuming with the classroom sizes and stuff, it's meant to be kind of like an emergency operations center of some kind. Again, that's my FEMA background, you know, going in. So I just love the fact that they're looking at developing that site and looking at utilizing it for those kind of things and bringing that kind of services closer to the Arlington community.
Yeah.
Agree.
I was going to say, I remember when they added the little portable thing to the south side. I don't know, I'm 28, so I was like, that, and that's a, I was like, that's a permanent shelter or solution? And so when I saw this come up, I was like, wow, this is a grand design. It's very, very detailed. It was very easy to picture. I didn't also realize there is that much of a slope in the middle of it to where you can make all of these different levels. It's more pleasing to the eye. That area has been needing some refurbishment for a long time. So the whole plan, I looked at it and went, I really don't have a whole lot of coding issues and a whole lot of other things to question, because it's very front forward. And a lot of... and a lot of electric vehicles spots, it's very, very up-to-date. So I appreciate all of your hard work.
Any other questions? Okay, the Chair will now request a motion to approve the Snohomish County Operations Center Design.
I make a motion to approve the EOC design?
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Snohomish County Operation Design has been approved. Do we have?
Thank you.
No. Moving on, do we have any public comments?
No, not for the design review.
Any comments out here? Okay, the next order of business are the Commissioner updates and comments. Do any of the Commissioners have anything they'd like to bring forth based on the agenda? It's easy-peasy. Okay, the next order of business are the city staff updates or comments. Do we have any?
We do not at this time. Do we anticipate another design review coming in May? So I'm hoping to have it ready for a workshop.
Okay.
But other than that, I don't believe there's any changes left to be made or any bills that we need to be concerned about at this point in time, and I think we're good.
Okay, so are we actually going to have a workshop this next time, so we can sit down and talk about some of these projects?
I would like to say yes, but I don't know the answer to that, considering that's going to be an Amy thing. I think as long as, so I just got that routed yesterday, I think, so that's in two weeks. I should be able to get it done, so that I would like to, just because since the design review matrix is new to me, since I just picked this up from Amaricia, and I was going through trying to say, okay, where are we at? What needs to be changed? What don't I like? And then working with you guys as far as the PowerPoints and what exactly I could help you see better for just ease of review moving forward. So I think it would be beneficial.
Agree.
So I hope so, but I can confirm Annie will be back tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the last one, we just didn't have anything ready as of yet, because these both came through after the workshop, but before the meeting.
Okay. Okay, well, if there is nothing else, the Chair requested a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I move to adjourn?
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, here are no objections. It is, we are now adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.